Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
... Charles Chick McDougal. And of course, Chick gave decades and decades of his time to the town of Exeter between Exeter Junior Baseball, The Parkway, and of course, the Brass Band, which we all know him from. In the 56 years that he performed and entertained the citizens of Exeter, and I believe he's the longest continuous member of the Brass Band. So tonight, if we could just pause and honor the life and the decades of volunteer work of Mr. McDougal, if you'd join the board in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Our thoughts and sympathies are with Chick's family. May his memory be eternal. At this point, call for public comment if there's any members of the public that would like to come in and comment. And for the sake of brevity, I don't see any members of the public, so we'll move on. I'm going to take my mask off for a minute because I know the microphone in here isn't working. I'm going to put it back on after this, but I want to make sure that I'm heard. This is not an official proclamation of recognition, but our Public Works Director Jennifer Perry was awarded one of the top 20 Public Works Leaders for 2022 by the American Public Works Association. This award began being presented to Public Works Leaders in 1960. And I believe the Director Perry is probably the only director from Exeter to ever win this award. But I do know that since 1960, Director Perry is the only woman DPW director in New England to ever win this award. And that is very, very, very impressive, Jen. Your work here with the town of Exeter, we could go on all night with all of the projects that you've led your team through. I think probably, you know, one of the biggest was the wastewater treatment plant. Recently, of course, the Water Service Department won a prestigious award of their own for that. But all of the initiatives and projects, the wastewater treatment plan provided not only Exeter, but this region cleaner water. And the environment is very important to folks here in Exeter. And most of your initiatives have that sense of environmentalist to it with the wastewater treatment plan. I look at other green projects, the recycling initiative that you brought, I don't know how many years ago. Recently, the textile recyclables. You've embraced the desire of the community to be green, to look out for our environment. And you've also done so by each year presenting budgets that are incredibly lean. Because while you look at our infrastructure, while you look at the needs and the wants of the town, you also take into consideration the taxpayer dollars. And in addition to presenting lean budgets, you're always looking for alternative resources for funding. Most recently this year, you and Assistant Manager Melissa Roy and others and other department heads worked with our Congress people, particularly Congressman Pappas and Senator Shaheen, to present shovel-ready projects. And you obtained a significant amount of money for the town of Exeter through the federal spending due to the COVID funds. Any great leader is successful because they have a great team behind them. And you put together an amazing Public Works team. Public Works teams are also first responders along with police and fire. They're there in the winter to make sure that our streets are plowed at all hours of the day, our sidewalks are cleared at all hours of the day, all hours of the day and night if there's a leak or a pipe break. You've put together an amazing team who respect you because you lead by example, you lead with integrity, with transparency, and you're an incredibly fair manager. Technical skills aside, in my years of experience of working, you're one of the most pleasant people that I have ever worked with. You always have a smile on your face, and you're always ready to tackle a problem. Your even temperament is essential in the leadership that you provide to your team. So we in Exeter are thankful for you and for your team, and we congratulate you for this amazing, amazing award. Congratulations.
Well deserved, Jennifer.
All those things are very much true, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm. I know. I couldn't add to that.
Not surprised, but very impressed.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes from the Exeter Select Board Meeting of March 14, 2022. And I'd ask the board at this time to come forward with any amendments or revisions.
I will move to accept them. The meeting minutes from Monday, March 14, 2022, as submitted. Second.
Is a motion in the second. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Four zero with one abstention. Unfortunately, we have a resignation to accept this evening from Patrick Gordon, who has chaired the Historic District Commission. Patrick is moving out of state with his family for a new work endeavor, I believe. So before we move to accept Patrick's resignation, I know he spent considerable time on the HDC and quite a few years chairing, so we thank him for his service and his work. And selectwoman Gilman, work closely if you want to say.
Yeah, it's been a real pleasure to work with Patrick, and I think I had to miss his last meeting because I was concord. He started a lot of initiatives which have really improved our presence, our presentation to the community, new applications that are easier for folks coming into the building department to get a new sign, get a new window, get a new addition or new building. And then also the grant we received for creating a new Historic District Guidelines, which are much more user-friendly and much more educational for the folks that are coming and looking to do some work in the districts. I will miss him because he was our specialist in windows. But he did a lot of good work, hard work for the commission, and I'm sorry to see him go. Happy for his family, but sorry to see him go.
At this time, I'd accept a motion to accept the resignation of Patrick Gordon from Historic District Commission.
So move. Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regrettably, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Patrick, for your service. Moving on to discussion items. First up this evening, we have Director Jennifer Perry to give us an update on all of the ongoing Public Works projects.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Nico, for your very kind words. I appreciate that at the intro. I'm sure I'll have a lot more to say tonight. I wasn't really prepared, but I would like to just thank everybody, and it does take a team, absolutely. I know that's true at Public Works, and we also see you as part of the team and Russ and Melissa and the other departments. I think this just reflects really well on everybody in the town of Exeter. And we do have a lot of work going on right now at Public Works. I've only highlighted the largest projects for you in the board packet tonight. I did not want to go on and just run on. But these are primarily our capital-type projects. And as you all know, the vast majority of the work that we do in Public Works is actually operations and maintenance, and none of that is reflected here. And I did want to just point out that right now we are having challenges with staffing levels in the department. We currently have six vacancies, and we're constantly beating the drum recruiting right now. It's a very challenging time. We're competing with a lot of different industries. We're competing with other municipalities, and we encourage anybody who's listening that is interested in a career in Public Works. You can go to the town website, and our positions are posted there. And we're very eager to consider locals. The first project I did want to mention tonight is the Squam Scott River Sewer Siphons. As you all know, that's a very important, urgent project. The design is essentially complete. We just received the Army Corps of Engineers permit, which is a very long-term around. It's almost a four-month turnaround, but we do have that, along with the Section 408 permit, which is essentially a consistency permit. And we, once we have that, we are submitting for our shoreline permit, which is essentially, it's a permit by notification, so it's not a very long time to get. And we anticipate going out to bid for this shortly, and construction will be commencing this summer. One of the key pieces, though, that we needed to have in place was a contingency plan, which is essentially an emergency response plan in the case of failure of the existing sewers. How are we going to maintain sewer flow? And so we have to have a bypass pump and piping system set up that would pump sewer from the base of JD Hill across String Bridge to Water Street. And we do have that planned. It's still in draft, and we're submitting it to DES for their review and approval. But that work has all been ongoing, and we know that it will be complete by the end of this year. The next largest project that we're working on is the Webster Ave Sewer Pump Station, which you all know was an article at town meeting this spring. And with that passage, and with a lot of additional funding from state and federal agencies, we'll be moving forward with that final design, and that'll be a construction likely next year. Salem Street Area Utilities will be kicking off again shortly. There was a winter shutdown after starting up that work last fall. That sewer, water, and drainage, and final road repairs, that should be wrapping up by the end of summer, early fall. And similar, the wastewater treatment plant sludge removal project that has been going on this past year, there was a winter shutdown. The geotextile tubes that have been filled with sludge have been going through another cycle of freeze thaw, which assists with the drying of that, or at least the dewatering of that material, and making the trucking a little bit cheaper. And that material will be started to be removed again and hauled off-site, and that work will be complete this season. The Kingston Road Shoulder Widening and Sidewalk Project, I think everybody's very eager to see that get going, and I had been a little overly optimistic in thinking that that could commence this year. It cannot commence until next year, in part because the state funding for that project doesn't become available until October. And we don't recommend starting that until we can get it all done in one season. It really doesn't make sense to get it started and then have to stabilize it for the winter and start up again. It really is only a single season of construction work. And we do still have two outstanding easements that we've been working with Dave Sharples in planning and the Economic Development Director Darren Winham to get some assistance. They're both very assertive and helpful in that regard. We do have to get those two last permits, but we've been working very effectively with DOT. We do have a new project manager at DOT that's working with us. We also have to go through what's called Local Project Agency Certification. I'm certified, but I need another project manager to be certified to manage that project. So that training is going on next week. So we'll have two more people in the department that are certified. Pickpocket Dam is another project that I think everybody's pretty much aware of, the high-hazard dam up on the border with Brentwood. We're looking at the feasibility of alternatives, what would be the best alternative for the town to consider to modify that dam to be able to discharge two and a half times the 100-year flood, which is a requirement of the state for a high-hazard dam. And that work is, we've asked for a proposal and scope from VHB, who's been working with the town up to this point on our emergency action plan for Pickpocket Dam, and they were also the engineer who had worked with us with the removal of Great Dam. We expect that that feasibility study, which isn't, it's not an isolated project that's just managed by the department. We work very closely with the River Study Committee and other stakeholders. So it's not always a linear progression. It's going to take some time, but we do see that as a, could be as short as an 18-month period for the feasibility study. The town is required to submit our selected alternative to the dam bureau by June of 2024, and that alternative is expected to be constructed by December of 2027. And West Side Drive area improvements, that's utilities, water, sewer, drainage, road, not redesign, but we'll say diet, road narrowing, sidewalk improvements, all of that work is going on right now. We just completed the conceptual work that was funded by a Clean Water SRF planning study, 100% funded by the state. We'll be commencing the final design right now. We just started that work with Underwood Engineers, and we'll be proceeding final design this year and anticipate construction possibly next year, but we've really got to look at scheduling on that. And lastly and not leastly, we have been spending a lot of time on groundwater search with our consultant team of Underwood Engineers and GZA, Emery and Garrett. And we have been working with the Academy on a potential site. We have been doing a lot of test well drilling. It's very expensive work just to do test well drilling, and we are waiting for the proceeds from the next bond issue, which would be July, before we really can get that up and going again. We've pretty much expended the majority of the funds that we've had available to do that work. So there's plenty of other projects. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have. I didn't include everything, such as we're going to be assisting Parks and Rec with some of the improvements needed at Number 10 Hampton Road. We have a lot of other smaller projects, intersections programs, stormwater improvements, Epping Road, Tiff on the outward side of Continental Drive to Route 101. Town Hall work, I know there's a lot that's needed at Town Hall, and the attic insulation, and lighting, and other HVAC improvements, so I didn't want to go on ad nauseam. I think I've already taken everybody's time.
That's great.
I have two questions, but I wanted to see if anybody else has any questions for Director Perry.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Selectwoman.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
The siphon project, is that going to impact Swayze Parkway at all in terms of the roadway? And can you comment to that?
Yes, it will. As a matter of fact, we do need to mark out that location so that people will have an understanding of the area that we will be occupying. It won't be for the duration of the project. It will be for a significant portion of it, though. And like I said, that's going to be mostly a summer, early fall project. And we know we have to work very closely with the trustees and with you to make sure that everybody understands. But there is going to be a pit adjacent to the area where we were standing with Congressman Pappas, pretty much in line between where the main pumping station is and the river will be on the outside of the curve in the green space area there.
Okay. And that'll start sometime in the summer into the fall?
Summer, yep.
Because I'm thinking, and I see Parks and Rec here, if there's anything that's permitted already, we would have to, to be fair to the permit, you know, if we can get word to them as soon as we can. Okay. Great, thank you. And then back to the Kingston Road, two questions on that. Are we fairly close to getting the easement permit?
I haven't had a recent conversation. The last I talked with planning was probably two weeks ago. I do need to follow up to see where that's at. My understanding was that they had made connections with those property owners that needed to provide us with easements. So for all I know, we could already have them. I have not had a recent update. So yes, we are making good progress on that. And like I said, I think part of it is the communications with New Hampshire DOT are very critical because they are essentially providing 80% of that funding, and they have been processing all of our requests in a very timely manner.
Okay. So you're fairly optimistic the funding will be available in October that would lead to a spring?
Yes.
Twenty-three?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? You could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Laura Knott, 15 Cameron Lane. On the Kingston Road project, are you, I don't know if you're allowed to say, enter into the public record the names of the easements that you're still waiting on?
I don't have the actual names, but I know approximately their locations. One is the first parcel as you go over the bridge, just beyond West Side Drive. It's on the left. That's, I believe it's a cell tower property. That's one that we are working with. And the other one, it is an individual. I don't want to give out names. It's not that they're being problematic, it's just been very difficult to get connections with some of them. And one is a multi-unit, multi-owner. It's just made it very complicated, so. But we're drilling down. We made those connections. I don't see that as being the tie-up at this point. It will only be a few more weeks before we have all of those completed, so.
Thank you.
One more question, thank you. And congratulations, by the way. On the, so if the funding comes in in October, that I assume will carry into the following year. We won't have to reapply for '23 funding or anything? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Yes, that's correct. The funding, it's, their fiscal year runs October through the end of September, so it's their fiscal year 20, truly help me, it's '23. So fiscal year '23 is the funding for that project, and our warrant article allowed for that work to be completed up through December of 2024. But we won't take that long.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have Police Chief Pooleen with an update for us. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, how are you, sir?
Good, thank you. So as you know, we have the CPSM Police Operations and Data Report, it was completed back in June of 2020. We continue to take those recommendations and put them to use. Today, we've implemented many of those major recommendations within the report. Tonight, we'd like to describe how many of the remaining objectives can best be rectified with the addition of a second lieutenant. Our similarly sized neighbors at the Hampton Police Department have a structure that's a chief, deputy chief, and two lieutenants as well. Many agencies our size will have a similar structure. So this year, our police union agreed to remove the ACL position from within its collective bargaining unit and allow it to be reclassified as a second lieutenant position in July. Our ACL position has been vacant since August of 2020, and frankly, we found that there just isn't enough work to justify the need for a full-time ACL in Exeter. The new duties and responsibilities for the two lieutenants would be, one would be an operations lieutenant, which would be in charge of the patrol schedule, fleet maintenance, uniforms, equipment. They would review the sergeant reports, monitor patrol activities, respond to calls as necessary, and they could also fill in for sergeants that are out sick or on leave or vacation. The professional standards lieutenant, their main objective would be to help us seek Kalia accreditation. That's going to be a lot of work. And we feel that right now we need that extra help, that extra, someone to really focus on that portion of it. They would also take over training. They would take over internal affairs complaints, recruitment selection, pursuit analysis, and use of force reviews. Right now, we have one lieutenant that does all those, so it would be splitting the duties up. We'd be looking to We'd be looking to fill the second lieutenant position in July of 2022. The ACO is budgeted for in 2022. The difference between the lieutenant pay grade and the budgeted ACO salary for six months would be approximately $9,000. There's been an open budgeted patrol officer position since the beginning of this year, as well as a month without a deputy chief salary. So those would offset the budgeted costs for 2022. In 2023, we would budget accordingly for the second lieutenant and no ACO.
Makes sense. Any questions for Chief Poole?
He answered mine and all of you funded, so thank you.
Any questions for Chief Poole?
That's quite clear.
I have a question. So just to be clear, this is just reclassifying a position that you've had open?
Yes, reclassifying the ACO position.
Okay, and you did that through negotiation with the union?
Yes, through the town manager and through the union.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Do you think that you'll have an easier time hiring this position?
So...
The ACO?
Yes. We have a good core group as patrol sergeants. I don't think we'll have any problem finding a second lieutenant out of that group, and then we would backfill from there.
And good answer. Mr. Dean, I don't think, do we need a motion or just the board giving our blessing?
Yeah, just if the board can give its blessing, that'd be great. This position is already accounted for in our classification plan. It's a grade 13, so it's already there, ready to go.
Okay. And the budget seems to equal out. Any opposition to this?
No.
So you need a measure or a motion for reclassification per this?
No, because it's a, all that's happening here is that one position's being eliminated and being replaced by another, and that other title is already on our job classification plan, so we would look to fill that at a grade 13.
So that's the motion you need?
We don't need a motion.
Just the blessing.
Consent.
Got it. Oh, forth, and good luck.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that people were aware of the whole animal control officer change.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Wilking, you will need two motions, though, I believe.
You will. You will. Good evening. And select woman Cowan's question's a loaded question because the term "easy" is a very odd term to put to hiring today. And I know Jen Perry's dealing with it in the police department, and we have two open positions, two we hope to hire in July, and three people out on long-term leave. So just to paint a picture, it's across all aspects. It's not one division. We're all doing fine. We're all providing services, but hiring is proving to be quite the process. But good evening anyway, Mr. Chair and the Board. I come to you with some recommendations on the two bids that we opened two weeks ago-ish. I submitted a memo to the town manager. I believe it's in your packet, just outlining the two. The first for Engine Five, the 20-year-old pumper. As a statesman memo, I truly appreciate the support of the board, all the committees' budget recommendations, as well as the town manager and the voters for their support. Thumbnail, picture, summary, we sent out 10 bid requests by both U.S. Postal Service and email. It represented 11 different manufacturers of apparatus, much to my surprise. And Russ' comment two weeks ago was, were you only expecting one bid? It's like, holy cow, no. But when you drill down, you boil down and talk to the apparatus manufacturers, it begins to make a little more sense. And we spoke to the two manufacturers, or I reached out to the two manufacturers, other than Greenwood's, that have supplied apparatus over the last 20-year span. In fact, the ladder truck is a KME. The very last one we traded in was a Pierce. So the history doesn't go back very far, but they're all very respectful of the process and understanding of how communities go about buying apparatus. But when you boil it down, the dealer, the CAD time, and the manufacturers put between 80 and 100 hours just to put that bid book together that you opened two weeks ago. And when they look online and they go to fire service news and they see the town of Exeter has bought an E1, an E1, an E1, there begins to be a pattern that the other dealers just respect. And I guess that's the easiest way to say it. So Greenwood's E1 submitted a bid because obviously they sold us our last three pump trucks, and the other two respectfully declined, and I received crickets from everybody else out there. So I'm not sure what to read into all of that. There are some of them are smaller mid-sized companies, some family-owned companies that produce 20 to 30 pieces of apparatus a year. The ones we're dealing with are completing between 700 to 1,000 piece apparatus a year and finding difficulty doing that with a supply chain. So just to carry it further, we did reach out to the three. I have been in constant communication with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, and they have reaffirmed the fact that their bid is good. They have offered, if we can produce a prepayment schedule for this and get financing, they're willing to offer us a $15,000 prepayment credit, if you will, a bonus, which brings the cost of the apparatus down to 635, not 650. And that would be between finance, Russ and I, we'd work all through that. But with your blessing, and I would recommend moving forward with the approval of the bid from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of an Emergency One piece of fire apparatus in the amount of $635,000. Assuming we can get financing, so I guess I should say 650.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Dean, should we make the motion for the 650?
I think you should.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in case. I'm sorry about that.
And then Russ obviously authorized you to sign the contract?
Yes. That would be great. And we will do financing as a separate item like we typically do. Once you award the bid, we'll go back and we'll get our financing quotes, and you'll see that as a separate packet.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion that we approve the proposal submitted by Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of the Engine Five replacement, which is an E1 vehicle in the amount of $650,000, and authorize the town manager to sign the contract?
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much. The second bid that was open that evening was for the replacement of the breathing apparatus that the firefighters wear. We currently have 45 breathing apparatus, and during the span of time that those were purchased and today, we've eliminated one of our engines, which kind of removed some seated positions. We've reinstalled others. So we did some math, and we only need 36. So we put out the bid, the request to replace 36 pieces of breathing apparatus. At the bid opening, there were two bids received for this. Firematic Supply out of Milford, Mass. submitted a bid of $374,308. This was on the surface, $25,900 more than what we'd even had approved at the warrant. We reached out to Firematic. They were fully aware of what our amount was that was voted at town meeting. However, the company that they represent, Mine Safety Administration, MSA, had a price increase throughout the spring. So from the time we put together the budget, CIP, and brought it to the voters, they could no longer be competitive. So their epacs were in the $9,000 per unit price. No matter what we did working with them to see if there were options that were exceeding our recommendations, nothing brought it back down below 348, 344. Which led us to Industrial Protection Services, IPS. They're out of Salem, New Hampshire. Their bid was 269,843, exceedingly low as compared to the MSA price. But when we looked at that bid, the team that put the bid package together decided to bid bare bones breathing apparatus and then list off a dozen-plus options that we would kind of à la carte pick. So it took some time, but we sat with the dealer. We picked the à la carte pieces that made, that allowed that air pack to comply with our bid spec. Just a quick little note, the Scott apparatus that this company bids is the exact piece of apparatus we're using today. We've been using it for 10 years. We have a history with the company and the pack, and all good. We put the package together. We finalized the quote about a week ago. I submitted that to town manager Dean, and their package price with everything we need to make it comply with our bid spec is 328,835. Yes, it's higher than the 269, but it is $19,500 less than what was approved by the voters. So this is coming in under what we predicted it would be when we put the warrant together. So I'm seeking your approval to sign an agreement and invoice for 328,835 for the purchase of 36 breathing apparatus, conversion to our compressor to accept the parts and whatnot, and they can deliver those in about eight weeks or so. So this summer, they'd be swapped out.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Wilking? Okay, then seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the bid of $328,835 provided by Industrial Protection Services, which would meet the needs of the Department of the Town of Exeter for the breathing apparatus and authorize the town manager to sign the contract?
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
That's all I have. Thank you all very much.
Next on our agenda is our own select woman, Julie Gilman, who after she departed from our last select board meeting, spent the rest of the week in Concord, I believe.
Well, three, you might as well call it the rest of the week. It was three days, but they were very, very, very long days and full of many topics of special interest to us as municipal and county. Everything we wanted got, did not pass, I should say. Or everything we didn't want did get passed. Let's see, what's the default budget? There were two different default budget bills that would, again, just fiddle with what's counted from what budget to the default budget for that year. And one was in our committee and one was in another committee, and they both failed. Yeah, they both failed. It was inexpedient to legislate. Village districts, we don't care about, there was the, I think I spoke about the four housing units per residential property. That one was tabled. Anything that was tabled at that point is, can only come off the table with a two-thirds majority vote of the whole body. So I don't expect anything else will be coming off the table. There is a bill, there's a bill that's requiring, allowing towns to provide composting and, what's the other one? Composting and recycling services. And I was quite surprised that it still hadn't been like a thing that towns were allowed to do. And I guess in the wording of this was that it was the town doing the work. And I still didn't understand why towns weren't doing this, or, you know, why the question was being asked. And so in my committee, I told them how we do things and that, like, for example, our new composting thing, we don't actually pay for that. They come and take it, right? They just, we give them all our stuff and they come and use it for their business.
There is a monthly charge that Mr. Fox Composting does charge the town to come and collect the material that's up at the transfer station, but it was less than what it costs to collect at Curbside in our solid waste program. So it was an offset. I don't remember what the monthly charge is. It's based on the number of bins that we have up there.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, now I know. But that one, that one actually did pass. There were tax credit ones that either were tabled or failed, which is actually a good thing because although I would love to lower people's tax bills, in the past few years, the tax abatements and exemptions that have been proposed at the State House are just narrowing and narrowing and narrowing down who's actually paying taxes. So, you know, in a couple of years, one of them wanted to change the elderly exemption to 60, starting at 60, which I thought was okay. But the amount, you know, and then the amount of money, it was time to update that, but the whole thing didn't, didn't go. What are the other, what are the other important ones? I'm sorry, my other computer died, so I don't have the things I want on it. That really is, the next session is next, is this Thursday, actually. Well, we'll finish up with some random things, and I don't think that there's a whole lot exciting on it, but don't quote me. Please look at the calendar. Please let us know, or let me know if there's something of interest. I just gave Mr. Dean a letter I got from the New Hampshire Private Roads Association, and it's about the Senate bill that the House is going to get in my committee about towns just taking over private roads from housing developments, homeowners associations. It's just town road now, not, not a private road. And that's been before us many times in individual cases, but not as a statewide initiative. So I would like some input on that because I have an opinion, but I want to hear from people what their opinions are because I don't live on a private road, so. I think that's all I'm going to give you tonight. I'm a little scattered because everything was on here.
Well, thank you for the update, and we look forward to those as regularly as you can give them. Any questions for select woman Gilman? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the annual reorg, if we will, of the 2022 Committee, Select Board Representative Committee assignments. And what we can do is go down the list and gauge interest if people want to continue serving, or if they want to switch it up, or if other people are interested. We can also have backups designated. So we'll start with the Planning Board. Currently, select woman Cowan is the representative.
It has been my honor and privilege to serve for two years at the Planning Board, and I know that Nancy, who has also served as an alternate on the Planning Board, is interested in still in continuing.
I am.
Yes, okay. So I would be thrilled for you to take that.
Okay.
Are there any other members of the board interested in planning?
Well, I'm interested in planning but not serving.
Yes, interested in planning.
All right, select woman Belanger, and a backup?
I would be happy to be the backup.
Okay, next we have the REC Advisory Board, which currently has select woman Gilman as the representative, with select woman Roundtree Olaf as the backup.
I'm fine with that one. Here's what I would like to know, actually, is which of these commissions meet, or committees, I know most of them, but not all of them, that meet during the day? That might make it hard for some of us to serve on.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
Or some of us easier to serve on.
Well, I know Planning is evening, REC is at evening, Arts and Culture, select woman, evening, okay. Concom, evening, Heritage, evening, HTC, evening, Rockingham Planning.
That's random, so. And I'll stay on that because it's part of my duties as a state rep, too.
Swayze Parkway is usually like five-ish, five-thirty?
It's evening.
Yeah.
Afternoon. Depends on if they're doing sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Energy Committee is...
Days, afternoons.
Facilities is late afternoon. Housing is usually morning.
Always morning.
Okay. River Advisory is afternoon, but not monthly, as it has been. Sustainability is evening, and Water and Sewer is evening, if that helps.
That does.
Okay. So back to the REC Advisory Board.
I've served on that for two years. I'd be happy to take it back. You have a fairly heavy load that I suspect you don't want to give up.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, I'll take it back.
You can go tomorrow night, or I can still go. It's on my calendar.
It is my son's ninth birthday tomorrow night.
All right, so I will go tomorrow night.
Thank you, Julie.
And select woman Roundtree Olaf, will you still serve as the alternate?
I will be the alternate.
I will be the alternate.
Thank you. Okay, and then Arts and Culture, presumably you want to keep that?
That's perfect.
Okay. Concom, Selectwoman Gilman?
I would love to share that with someone.
Okay.
It's a, it's a very interesting group. I have been, like, I'm going to miss, I missed last meeting because of the election, and I'm going to miss the next meeting for personal reasons. But it's a great group, and you learn a lot, and the select person does not have a vote. So it's kind of heavy lifting, but not really.
How often does it meet?
Monthly.
And when?
The second Tuesday.
So it's not on the REC Advisory? Those don't affect?
No, no.
Are you asking to, to give it up, or?
Well, let's everybody think about it. Let's go through the rest of them.
I might, I just, I don't know that I could commit for the whole thing.
Yep.
Okay, Heritage Commission?
I will keep the Heritage and the HTC unless somebody else is interested.
Interested in Heritage or HTC? Okay, Julie. And you're going to keep Rockingham?
Yep.
Swayze Parkway Trustee? Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, keep that, or?
Yes.
Okay. Do they meet, they meet monthly?
They do.
They do? Okay. I'm going to put myself as the alternate if there's meetings that you can't make. If you could just let me know, and I'm happy to go for it.
I'll make sure that they CC you as well.
Perfect, thank you. Communications Advisory Committee?
That's mine.
Presently?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to keep it.
Okay. Energy Committee?
I really love that one. I love the people that are on it and the things they've been able to accomplish. But I know it's, it's usually at three-thirty on a Wednesday. And I know it's difficult for.
People with full-time jobs?
I mean, that's another one where I could, I could possibly split it with you. I don't know that I could do.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Because I can't always make it in certain time parts of the year.
So why don't we, why don't we put you as the, as the rep? I could be the alternate.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll let me know?
Yep.
Okay. Facilities Advisory Committee?
I would love to keep that one.
Any other interest?
That one's not for, that's just an ad hoc for a short period of time.
It's a, it's an advisory committee formed by the board. So it's, it has, it's not an ad hoc committee. It was designed to be a standing committee of the board. So that's how I'd describe it.
That doesn't have a, well, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't have a sunset.
Their warrant article. Housing Advisory Committee?
Yeah, Lovey, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to stay on.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I appreciate that. We have a lot going on. And I've been.
If Selectwoman Belanger is unavailable, would you want to be the alternate?
Yeah, I can be the alternate.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, River Advisory Committee. Unless anybody else is interested, I can keep that. However, I do want to talk about that at a later date because there may not be a, an ongoing need for this committee to meet as a committee. And I have some thoughts about that. And essentially, they only meet, they're supposed to meet monthly, but the way it's been going for the last year, year and a half, is they meet every other month. Or sometimes they skip two months during the season, depending upon what's going on. The meetings typically take about twenty minutes. And it's, it's essentially the town engineer giving an update on the nitrogen in the water and the Pickpocket Dam. So even at our last meeting, the Chair questioned, you know, because obviously it was formed for a reason, and that reason has now been resolved with, with the dam. My thought for consideration, not for a decision today, is maybe to, like with the Tree Committee, if we made the River Advisory a subcommittee to the Concom?
That's probably the right fit. I would, I would recommend discussing it with Concom first because, or at least our Natural Resources Planner, because there's already the Subcommittee and the Trails Committee, and people are stretched then on that committee, on that commission. And also, I'm just wondering if it isn't going to be, the, the River Advisory Committee may be more active because of Pickpocket Dam.
The way they described it, and the town engineer was here, you know, for the conversation, is that unlike the other dam, there may not be enough, I mean, there may not be anything for them to really do. So I was thinking if we keep a subcommittee, and, and, you know, I don't even know if the committee would want to stay on as a subcommittee, but certainly, you know, what, what the town engineer presents for updates is very valuable. But it's at three o'clock on a Thursday afternoon, and I don't know that his message gets out to too many folks. So if, if, if there was either a subcommittee or no committee, and then have, you know, Mr. Vlasic come to the Select Board on a quarterly basis just to give updates, I mean, that, that's a possibility. Jen, do you have any thoughts on that? Or is that out of your?
I don't.
Okay. Something to think about?
My thought was along the lines of what you just said. If, you know, Paul could just do it directly to the Select Board as needed, so that the information's getting out there.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So it's a, it's a twenty, twenty-five minute meeting, and Paul probably takes up fifteen of it with his update, and the others approving minutes and moving to adjourn and so forth. So I'll, I'll stay on it, but maybe when we talk about committees next month, we can think about it between now and then. And Sustainability Advisory Committee, I'm happy to stay on that unless anybody wants it. Okay. And Water and Sewer Advisory Committee?
We've been chugging along for four years. I'm happy to stay.
Okay, all right. So back to Concom, Selectwoman Gilman, did you want to, you want to put you as the rep and me as the alternate? How do you want to?
I'd be happy.
Or do you want to?
I'll be happy to do the, it kind of goes hand in hand, not hand in hand, but it is part of planning a little bit, right? And, just like housing is part of planning and how I ended up doing that. So I would be happy to be the backup if, or share, whatever you'd like. What would you like to do? It's once a month, right?
Yep, on second Tuesday.
Yeah, so.
I, I.
You want me to take it?
Frankly, I think that the things that you discussed in housing and how it's.
It makes sense.
It really does. But I had, thank you for putting it to the end because it gave me a chance to think about it. Nico, could you be my?
Yeah.
Thank you, folks.
And then you'll stay on his energy, but I'll be your alternate? Okay. Mr. Dean, did you get all those?
I did.
Okay. Okay.
Just to confirm that one, too, just, there was one that I, so Nancy's going to be the main rep with Nico as the backup on the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Gosh, that was my first assignment when I was the Select Board in 2014. That was my very first.
Yeah.
It's like I'm going back to old times.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Our last discussion item this evening is to schedule our goal-setting session in April. And typically, up until 2020, used to be conducted on a Saturday morning. Because of COVID, we didn't have a goal-setting session in, in 2020. But last year, due to conflicts and schedules, we ended up posting it for a five o'clock meeting here in the NOVAC room on a Monday. So I'm fairly flexible, so I want to leave, throw it out to the rest of the board, look at your calendars now, if you could, if we could find a date that's mutually convenient.
Are folks wanting to do it on a weekend?
So, Mr. Chairman, can I just pipe in while you're thinking about this? I was able to contact Primex last week, and Rick Alpers, who's done facilitation with the board before in prior years, offered April sixteenth or April twenty-third, which are both Saturdays. And I know that that may, I want to hear what your conversation is like, and I may go back to him and say, could you fit in a five o'clock on a certain night? But I just wanted to let you know that that's what he offered up. And I know the other thing he said is that Primex's services for this are pretty well in demand. So hopefully, we get maybe a couple of options out of this conversation, and I can go back to him with the, with that.
The sixteenth is not a possibility for me.
Yeah, twenty-third.
I could do the twenty-third. I'm with you. I would love to not have it on a weekend. Could we do the, I mean, honestly, any of the alternate Select Board meetings?
I would absolutely be fine with that.
So could you reach out to me? We're going to meet the eleventh for a Select Board meeting. And then I wanted to ask the board, I think the following scheduled would be, is that school vacation week for some?
Texting, so.
And so we should probably talk about that, too, now.
Yeah, the twenty, I mean, we're here.
I mean, I'm around, but I don't.
But I don't, I don't know. Well, because your kids.
We're not, we're not in the public school.
Right, you're not.
Vacation schedule.
So the eleventh and twenty-fifth for regular Select Board meetings works for everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So, Mr. Dean, can you reach out for the eighteenth?
For the eighteenth or the fourth?
Would folks be ready next week?
I could do it next week, too. I'm fine with the fourth or the four, or the eighteenth, if you need.
Yeah, well, could we?
I cannot do the fourth. We already have students coming back to visit.
Could we do May second as another alternative? That's just the next Monday.
Yep, I'm fine with that. At five o'clock, you said?
Or regular Select, I mean.
We, it's up to the board, but, you know, whatever time might work the best on a Monday night for goal-setting. If it's five o'clock, we could start early, I'm sure. Six o'clock?
It's fine.
Was the twenty-third an option for anybody? That was the, was the second Saturday that we had talked about. Can't do that.
I think, excuse me, I think we picked five or five-thirty last year, just because there wasn't any reason to wait till seven, and everybody was available, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have to get back in town early. That, that's why I was asking for a time.
Just to confirm, are we saying first option is the twenty-fifth of April? Or?
I have the eighteenth and the second.
The eighteenth works for me.
Okay.
April, April eighteenth and May second.
All right. I'd like to be able to give him two options. Is there, does it have to be a Monday? Is there another day that works for folks? I mean, I know this room is usually booked.
It does not have to be a Monday for me. I can do any evening, let's see, is, is next, I mean, next week is soon, but any evening, let's see, I have a trip. I mean, I could do, like, six PM on any night. I could do the fifth or the sixth. I could do the.
That's a bad week for.
Next week is, is revisit week for, for admitted students, and so.
Okay. I could do the twelfth or the thirteenth. Oh, wait, I can't do the thirteenth. I could do the twelfth.
I can't.
It's a Tuesday. You can't.
Until I know when Concom meets. I don't have it in my calendar yet, so I have to be careful here. It's the twelfth, so I can't do that.
Okay. The nineteenth or the twentieth look good?
The nineteenth I can do. Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays get trickier just because we have, we have matches and such.
So the eighteenth or nineteenth?
The eighteenth or nineteenth.
Can you start with that, Mr. Dean?
I, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so as far as this room, I'm looking at the town calendar. The night, we're okay on the nineteenth as long as we're out of here by seven, because zoning, the ZBA meets.
I think two hours sounds good.
Just been a while since I've done one. I can't remember how long they last. So right now, I have three possible dates. April eighteenth, April nineteenth, or May second?
April eighteenth or April nineteenth.
The second was bad for you, right?
Mm-hmm. Oh, the May second was bad for Lovey. I'm sorry, okay. So we're back to two dates, April eighteenth or nineteenth.
And the goal-setting doesn't have to be in the NOVAC room. I mean, I think, I think in the past, you've sort of had more of a roundtable.
Yeah, that's fine.
Senior Center, I remember, we used one year, and that worked out really well, so.
Yeah, one year we used the, the back room at the town house upstairs.
Yeah. So the REC building may be available that night as well. We can check and see.
Okay.
All right. So consensus, we start with the eighteenth and nineteenth. And, Mr. Dean, if that doesn't work, if you could circle back, maybe via email with dates, and as long as we're only replying to the town manager?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving into regular business, we have several credits, exemptions, and a payment. Turn that over to you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, there are no veterans' credits this week. I move to accept a yield tax from MAP five lot one in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents for the year 2021.
So I'm a second, actually. You moved it alternate.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny an elderly exemption for MAP one oh four lot seventy-nine, unit one thirty-two.
Second.
For the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
And, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an elderly exemption for MAP one oh four lot seventy-nine, unit seven oh nine, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous?
And, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP fifty-two lot one twelve in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents for the tax year 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next, Mr. Bisson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg Bisson, Exeter Parks and Recreation Director. First one in our packet, your packet that we're going to tackle is the pickleball conversion. So in October of 2021, our pickleball enthusiasts want more. They came to the REC Advisory Board asking for us to consider supporting their efforts to raise funds to convert the top three tennis courts into eight designated full-time pickleball courts.
Oh, Jesus.
Just like Portsmouth, Dover, and Keene have already done, they, they put the money where their mouth was, and they, they succeeded. They raised approximately so far three, thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars to go towards the thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollar conversion of the tennis courts to the pickleball courts, with some major contributions, ten thousand dollars from Riverwoods, five thousand dollars from the Matthews family, and five thousand from a donor that wants to remain anonymous. We're using our friends of recreation as an avenue to raise the funds, so those will be tax deductible. And they plan to form a Exeter Pickleball Club to help raise further funds to keep enhancing the park with wind screens and new fencing. So it's an exciting time, and we need your blessing to accept said funds. They already put a ten thousand dollar deposit out of their own pocket, they were so confident, to Vermont Tennis, our vendor that we've used in the past. And we're just now waiting for your blessing and the weather to turn to do the conversion. The conversion will take approximately eight business days.
How many?
How many courts?
Eight.
Out of how many? So it's four, four, four courts of the current, how many courts?
Three, three of the tennis courts are going to be turned into eight of the pickleball courts. So we're.
How many courts do we have now?
Temporarily lined, we have sixteen. So it will increase the capacity to be able to.
How many tennis courts do we have?
Eight.
We have eight tennis courts, and we're going to take three away.
That's correct.
It's like a.
So how, how do the tennis player, how do the tennis fanatics feel? I mean, that's, so you have five, five tennis courts left?
Five tennis courts left, but there is a overabundance of tennis courts in the town. So you're talking about there are six up at the high school, as well as sixteen at Phillips Exeter.
Hmm.
Ooh, this is dangerous.
Can random people go play at the high school at any time? Like after school?
Yes.
During school?
During school, I am unaware if they can. I do not believe so.
At the what school?
High school.
So I said during school, yeah, yeah.
So do we want to have like a discuss, a quick discussion about what it looks like during peak season or?
Sure. Sure.
Just so that we're making an informed decision about how this is probably going to go. So as pickleball attendance and, you know, participation increased, so did that of tennis during COVID. So the numbers of people who are playing both pickleball and tennis are quite astounding in a very positive and wonderful, healthy way. But if you were ever present during the summer and late spring and early fall months, you could see that the desire to access courts was pretty high and the number of courts versus the number of people did not match up so well. I'm very impressed and not surprised that the pickleball crew pulled this together and could pull this together. I just worry about what's going to happen to tennis in the parks because I assume we're still doing the youth program in the summer and we'll still have summer camp utilizing some of the court space in the summer. And there are at least offhand 4 female, 4 male, different club groups that would play in the summer. And there were at least 10 to 15 people at a time who would arrive to play, who would then leave and start texting to find out which court still had availability, whether it was at the high school or the location and, right. So I'm saying this to say that this is a great problem to have, but have we considered something else? And I'll give you an example. So I played pickleball down sometimes in Andover and they converted old outdoor hockey courts into pickleball courts and now they're expanding those even further. So they've separated them, so they have their full-time pickleball courts. And even still with their full-time 4 pickleball courts, words sometimes get exchanged about who's on first. So I'm saying this to say that I appreciate if everyone else is ready to make a vote. I can't because I know a little too well what this is going to turn into and look like. But they've done their work in raising the funds for it. I just don't know if it's going to, it's going to not be pretty.
I run fairly parallel with Select Women Round Tirolif. I think it's impressive that they've raised the money. But I'm concerned that there will only be 5 tennis courts available at the Parks and Rec Center. I understand there are other courts around town, but I think we can agree that if it's on a school, then it's not going to be available during the day. And I'd venture to say that there are folks in town that want to play during the day. You know, I'm torn here because I have the same concerns that you do. 5 tennis courts is not a lot. And I understand pickleball is popular. But so right now, you've got 8 tennis courts and how many pickleball, pickleball courts?
Well, the pickleball courts are not permanent, so.
They use them in the morning.
They use them in the morning and we had about 60 strong every morning, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But there is no drop-in, there's nothing where anyone can just walk up and use the pickleball courts. They have to be during group play only. This would allow anyone to be able to walk up and play pickleball, just like the same things that are attributed to tennis. Right now, they can't do that.
So, so how, out of 3 courts, you're going to get 8 pickleball courts?
That's correct, yep.
So if you have 60 strong, how many people can use 8 courts?
It's 4 per court.
4 per court.
So that's half of the demand.
Yep, and they rotate through. And there's a programmatic aspect to this where there'd be group play again in the morning, like we always did, but it'd be Monday through Friday. There would be opportunity to reserve said court and that's something, again, we could go towards for tennis as well. For free, not like there's any fee. And then we could also manage it by having different things like free pickleball lessons and leagues to generate more revenue. One of the things that we did look at is the number, and to Lovey's point, there is a lot of them, but on examining times, there's a lot of times I've been up there where.
Where it's empty, yes.
It's totally empty. Where Keene, Dover, Portsmouth, Portsmouth just announced that they're actually looking to expand more pickleball courts because the 8 they put in there are not enough.
So that's the other piece that I'm thinking about is once we have official pickleball courts, and this is also the issue that we saw in Andover. When you have the permanent structures, the people will come. So I just want us to be mentally ready for, then all of, you know, the people who donated and raised all this money do not own.
Correct.
Those courts. So then how do we handle the Exeter residents? Because I know that Portsmouth for a while was, if you weren't a resident of Portsmouth, you couldn't utilize certain couldn't come to the pool, you couldn't use the pickleball courts and it becomes a, you know, this is my space.
And plant a playgrounds right there.
Yes.
That's correct, yep.
And so there's a lot of.
Yeah, that's a problem. I mean, if, if you're going to start establishing leagues and, you know, 30 to 40 to 50 people. I mean, I know the parking will be fixed fairly soon since Townhampton Road, but, you know, if you've got leagues of people, you know, passionate about pickleball and you've got kids that play in a playground, you've got your summer camp, it's, there's not, it's congested.
It's doable. I think it's very doable. And one of the things, we've already attracted Big Brothers and Big Sisters last year, which was a very successful, the New Hampshire Senior Games has committed to the end of August as well. Based off our temporary, they had no inkling that this was coming down the road. But we did debate this and Julie was there. It was a good 45 minutes to an hour debate at the Rec Advisory Board. That was our biggest agenda item in October.
Any other thoughts?
Do we have to vote today? Like, is this a, does this need to be done today? Because I'll be honest with you, I think if, if there were more citizens who knew that this was, that we were going to lose 3 tennis courts in town. And yes, there are lots of pockets where they're empty, but the natural tendency is just like the pickleballers. Pickleballers, you know, the mornings are peak, you've got, you know, after the sun is at its peak, that people come back. And so it's not like, oh, we'll just come at noon or, you know, when we're dying in the heat of the sun. Everyone sort of has the same schedule and so I do worry that to take things away that people have gotten comfortable with, that they've also still had issues with, might be troubling. Especially when, if it's a windy day, pickleballers can't be out there as easily as tennis ball, you know, tennis players because the wind is too strong, you really can't have the same impact. And so you're sitting there watching 3 courts empty that people can't quite use, wishing that you could. So I, I'm putting that out there as.
I have to ask one question. Was the expansion or of tennis courts or retraction of tennis courts, I don't remember when the proposal for the whole Parks and Rec.
Larger project, yes. There were.
We just got new nets.
3, 3, yeah, the nets can be reused, that's it. In the original proposal way back, yes, we're reducing tennis courts as well.
We were reducing.
Yep. And that was going to become parking.
Well, this is a better trade-off. It's far worse.
And I, just one thing, if we do table it, I just need to let Vermont Tennis know and it pushes it back the timeline of the conversion, but at the same time, you, if it's going to be highly debated, you may want to change venues because this will be a packed house of.
I don't want to, I don't want to make a decision and then we make a decision and then we have an uproar of people who are like, how could you take 3 courts away? When both tennis and pickleball are now the most popular sports that we have in the, you know, like I, I could be an outlier. I'm not 100% comfortable making that decision where there's not one single, there's one single. One person from town, you know, who's not getting paid to be here, here. So, I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We don't have any scheduling mechanism for tennis?
We definitely do. Our rec software can do all the scheduling for tennis.
It can do it. It's capable of doing it. Is it doing it?
We've never done it in the past because it's just been.
So that's something we need to consider.
Yep.
So that we don't have people and maybe timed people using the tennis courts, whatever, so that there aren't people? Or is that not a realistic, I don't know, you seem to know a lot more about this than I do.
I'm just being realistic about the nature of, you know, it's like basketball courts in town centers, you know, it's like, there's, that's the benefit to having them. It's this, hey, do you want to go play? It's really nice outside, let's go do that. Versus, you know, if ever you've been a part of a gym where you're like, I have to sign up 2 days in advance because it's booked, that you take away sort of the openness and the freedom of people to just say like, let me show up. Because then what happens when people sign up and it's free and then they don't show up? And then you, you know, it's, that's.
Absolutely.
That's what happens when you have a setting like that where people don't have to pay, but they can just put their name in places.
Well, I guess maybe if we table it for another meeting, we'll be able to think of ways that we can have angry people showing up waiting.
More parallel with you on, I mean, I just, I share almost every concern that Select Women Round Tirolif has said. And I, but in the same way, and I think you'd agree, you don't want to give away, you know, you've had people that really worked hard to raise money for a good cause for the town. So, you know, how do you say, thanks but no thanks to $35,000?
Right, or thanks, give us a second, let's figure out a really good way to make everyone happy. Because I think both are parts of, you know, what makes our town great, that we have all these people who are interested in playing both sports.
I have a question. And this is going to show my absolute ignorance about all of this stuff. But are we required to give up 3 courts? Like, is there a scenario in which you give up 2 or 1? Or is it because of how you lay out, I mean.
It's how you, it's how you lay out the courts.
Okay, so it's 3 or nothing?
3 or keep them the temporary where people would need to have a coordinator and we need to have someone.
Got it, okay.
Staff on, and we do have 2 very lovely pickleball coordinators. They're currently in Florida right now playing pickleball. And some other volunteers that have helped out by, it's just, this spring alone, we've gone probably over 100 phone calls on pickleball when we're going to start our signups for the drop-in pickleball.
What is pickle, you know what, never mind.
It's an awesome sport that anybody can, you know, you don't have to be like a, you know, marathoner to play. It's fun. It's a lot of fun. It gets you outdoors and it's very social and people play are awesome.
Thank you. I think I need to take a field trip to watch people.
No, you should, you should. It's great.
It is the fastest growing sport in America.
It really is great.
I keep hearing that, but.
But, you know, people do get, it gets feisty.
It does get feisty.
Pickleball court, it can.
How many people are still playing tennis regularly? Because I know, and I haven't played in years.
Yeah.
But when I used to go down to play, the courts were full. Is that not true anymore?
I have, the courts were busier during the pandemic, but I, I'm there a lot during the summer, as you know. And I see them a lot of times sitting empty. Sometimes I'm there till 6 or 7 and Assistant Town Manager Roy can attest, she's probably been there later when she ran the pool last year and yeah, but Lovey is right, during the off-hours in the evening. The demand goes up, but then the school is also available in the off-hours. And last year, when we had our courts closed 2 years ago during the height of COVID, the high school followed suit, but they soon opened them up before we did and people were going up there. And when we ran our drive-in movie series, we'd see probably 20 people up there, 15, 20 on 6 courts playing. So it was, it was active. But I've also had people tell me that live on that side of town that they'd rather play at the high school instead of driving, so.
And so I think that might be part of the discussion is to also make sure that the high school is still okay. And, and it's a, because it may not be transparent to everyone that the high school is accessible and available to people who live in town to use off-hours and then just make it a little more formal and say during these hours, you can use those courts if these are full. You know, in a, if we get to the point where we're going to turn 3 courts into pickleball courts. Which is, I think, you know. What a great problem to have.
It is.
All right, okay.
I would not want to be in charge of it.
Sorry, pull table at then and come back on the 11th?
Is, I mean, is everyone else?
Is the board comfortable?
I'd just be the only one.
My only, and I'm fine tabling it, my only concern, no, it's not a concern, but we've, we've done this before where, you know, we'll have a public discussion, but it's going to be a packed room of, you know, 52 people telling us why pickleball is the growing speed. And that's, would like to get a, you know, I'd like to get a conversation as to whether or not this is what is going to benefit the community.
Oh, I absolutely think that, I'm not looking for the pickleball perspective. I know for sure that they are vocal, they, and, and they've been there and they're active and they want this. I just want to make sure that those who, those families who play tennis, who are, have kids who play tennis in town are aware that this is going to take place and then that, that's more my concern. I have absolute faith that, you know, this is what those who play pickleball want, so I'm not, I'm not worried about.
It should be a constructive discussion.
Yes.
Okay. So consensus is to table?
We'll talk about it tomorrow night at Parks and Rec.
Sorry.
But, but again, you know, we thank Friends of Rec and all of those that have made generous donations. It's not that the town is, you know, not looking to accept, just, I think maybe just another discussion would be prudent. Okay.
Sure.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, next memo, park improvement. I have a list of different projects and we added a supplemental this morning. I'm just going to go down there. One of the things, player safety for softball. Right now, we have no fencing. I am looking for Grand Slam fencing. If you don't know what Grand Slam fencing is, it's portable fencing system that can come up and down. It'll prevent balls from rolling into the thick brush that has a lot of poison ivy in it. As well as create a buffer between what we mow and what we do not mow. So that's important. That's at $2,990. That is the lowest estimate through Pioneer Athletics. Benches, as I said, the courts are heavily used, as we know, for pickleball, tennis, and summer camp. There's only 2 benches on the entire court system, so we're looking to add benches. We're going with our recycled plastic benches that we've done in the past through Belson Outdoors for $4,691.31. Looking to purchase water fountains and then I'll coordinate with Director Perry on, I have a contractor now lined up that I could have all these installed. These are not only would be water filling stations for bottles, but also ADA compliant, so people will be able to go up there. This is a lower estimate of, for 5 of them is $15,155. Which is cheapest. We could go higher end, but there's no reason to. Slide rehab, the Daniel R. Healy Pool slide was installed in 2005. It's gotten many uses. We're lucky enough, it was on the deferred maintenance list that was, you had during budget season. We are able to source out the parts and we're able to repair it, so it'll be back to pristine condition. And that's Petinelli and Associates out of Vermont for $5,642.55. Last year, we did discover there was a leak to the pool. We have cut open the, the pool deck, confirmed the leak. I have been able to line up 2 contractors, which is not the easiest thing to do in the season. So Advanced Pool and Spa out of London Hudson, New Hampshire and Concrete, Contrast Concrete LLC out of Derry, New Hampshire, those total to. Those total to repair the pool deck and put it back to order is $8,420.25. Fencing at Park Street Common, as you know, you approved the playground in January of this year. That will be going in. Again, Public Works is helping us out by removing said old playground and doing excavation work, which saves us substantial amount of money. The fencing at. At Park Street Common, a triple eight fencing came in at $14,586. No other contractor submitted after requesting. Picnic tables as well. There's three picnic tables that needed to be replaced because of rot at the recreation park. We're looking to replace them with the recycled plastic again. Those recycled plastic picnic tables are 450 pounds, so they're not that movable. Again, sole source and Belson. And then irrigation. One of the things is to improve. Townhouse Common is to improve the vitality of the turf because it is very difficult to maintain. It's a dust bowl oftentimes. Days Landscaping came in. They are right now our irrigation contractor. They've managed our irrigation for the last three years. They came in at $7,500 and they're available to do the work in early June, so. And. Lastly, playground chips and ADA surfacing.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Do you need two motions made?
Yeah, actually, yes, I will need.
So can I, can I stop you there? Any, any questions for Mr. Bisson?
I have one. Where else do we do? Irrigation?
Brickyard Park, Founder's Park, Gale Park, Recreation Park. And that's it for right now.
And what do we do about irrigation when there's a drought?
The ones that are non-athletic, we follow all drought regulations. The ones that are athletic fields.
Yep.
Jen and I discussed, it's a bigger investment to try to recreate an athletic field, so. But we, we do. Both, both the REC Park and Brickyard Park, for those that have had kids, knows the drainage is not the greatest. It takes a while to seep in. So we actually don't need to water that often, surprisingly. So it, it's a good thing when you don't have a field that drains. It's a bad thing when it pours for days and you want to have games, so it's a double edged sword.
And do you know who has, controls the. Irrigation around the. Town. Bandstand?
That would be me. And that, this was renovated last year.
Okay, well, it's running at the wrong time sometimes.
There's a lot of issues.
Just anecdotally, running in the middle of the day in a drought time is, you know.
Oh, yeah, that, that, there was a lot of issues with that one, Julie, and we actually had to replace a lot of piping in there because it was in a, wasn't properly installed in the first place. So that will be rectified, not a problem.
Okay, just, you know, trying to be leaders in conservation we need to do and have that happen. Just made me feel a little.
Sure.
Bad. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, there are no other questions. I'd entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expand. Excuse me, from the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to complete the following projects. The fencing at the recreation park, benches and picnic tables for the recreation park, water fountain for parks, water slide rehabilitation. Pool pips and concrete work and irrigation. Renovation for the Townhouse Common.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Go ahead, Greg.
And back to Park Improvement Fund, and again, I apologize for this, the, one of the exciting things is the next thing. Playground chips. We are adding playground chips. Which we know we have discussed in the past as not being the friendliest for ADA, but we have now found a product that is ADA compliant that go with playground chips. U.S. Playground Surfacing out of Connecticut developed. This new technology that uses a rubber matting to go over the playground chips in conjunction with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. If anyone doesn't know, Massachusetts now requires, and Nico does know this, that they require all playgrounds to be ADA accessible. On, in wheelchairs, so when you go in, so a lot of them had to be retrofitted. This is a way, it's a third of the cost of poured in place surfacing, which is the, the rubber stuff that goes on it. And it's a great product, which if this is successful, we will look to actually add that to Kids Park as well and make that an accessible playground as well. So both of those together comes up to $16,755.
I have a question on that. So how does that work? You make it accessible by putting some matting in at the entrance to the park and then what happens?
No, the, the matting actually goes throughout the park and to the key points to access the, the equipment. One path will lead to the ADA swing and the mommy and me swing. One path will, that path will continue to the toddler area. And the other path will lead to the larger structures, stairs and slide exit. So they'll be able to move around freely. It is. One of the greatest products I've seen. It took a while to, to find something. And when you really compare prices of $12 a square foot to $38 a square foot. It really adds up quickly. It would make it attainable. And for us that are looking down the future to the other playgrounds, if this is a successful product that we use, then it will save substantially on costs on other playground renovations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bisson? Then I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend. $16,755 from the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to complete the following projects. Purchase of all playground chips from PR Russell and ADA surfacing. From U.S. Playground Surfacing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous.
You should be seeing the playground renovation in late April. So look for that and I will update the board when we can have the official ribbon cutting.
Great, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, Mr. Dean, Town Manager Report, please.
Okay, just a few things tonight. One is that in following up with Julie's conversation about legislation, we got word late last week that HB 398, which is our sewer state aid grant bill, passed both the House and the Senate, so it's on its way to the governor for signature.
Great.
So that means about a million dollars for Exeter.
Fantastic.
Just this year, and then we'll look at next year as well. Hopefully that'll work out.
Jen's in the audience cheering.
Yeah, good. Yeah, we're both very happy about that and so will our ratepayers, so that's great news.
But remember that they're in the budget for '23 and '24.
Correct. Yeah.
It's in October.
Once we're on the list, you usually stay on the list, so. Once you're funded, that is, so we're, we're grateful for that and that'll be, that'll be nice. Also, House Bill 1033, which was the lobbying bill, was laid on the table by the House, so that effectively killed that bill. So we don't have to worry about our NHMA advocacy being in place for the, the following year until the next bill comes up about that. So that's good news. Internally, we've been working on the closing on the Tenhampton Road property, so that's ongoing, but we are working on that. We're also working on, until our Finance Director position is filled, we're working on the, pulling documents together for the bond issue and also getting quotes on the lease purchases for the different equipment. I did attend a Health Trust meeting on the 15th of March, which went well. And then Pam McElroy and I met with Richie McFarland and Waypoint. The two agencies have merged. So we met just to talk about needs and wants of seeing both agencies work together and how that would impact our, our human services funding going forward. And, and the last thing on my list was just to remind the board, one of the things that we committed to in our collective bargaining this year was celebrating Juneteenth as a holiday. And we wanted to make sure that that was sort of, so that was spread out to other employee groups. So we do plan on having that holiday. It, it does fall on a Sunday this, this year, so we would be celebrating it on Monday.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
And In By The Bandstand is also in your packets under Correspondence. We went out and met with them. Please review it when you get a chance and let us know if you have any questions as we sort of move, as we move that project forward.
Okay.
All right? And that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Any questions? Okay. Moving to Select Board Committee Reports. Selectwoman Belanger, do you, did you have any?
I don't have any.
Okay, you will soon enough.
I will.
Selectwoman Gilman?
I have nothing since the last meeting. But I do have Parks and Rec. This weekend, Heritage and HDC next, no, in three weeks, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
We had a planning board meeting last week where there was a very high level discussion about Ray's Farm changing some of the proposed. Building placements.
All right, Selectwoman Rantioleff?
Not that.
I just had River Advisory, but we already talked about that. One thing I would like to bring up, Mr. Dean, either. On the 11th or the 25th. We'll bring back the, the revised draft that Selectwoman Rantioleff and I worked on, on committees, so that we can move forward with some of our suggestions and get Selectwoman Belanger up to.
Thank you.
Speed and get her suggestions. I know that, Mr. Dean, your office gave me a list of all of the committees and boards and the vacancies. And there's a lot of vacancies. Pretty much across the board, so we need to try to work on recruiting folks.
You know, this is where, there's a couple pieces of legislation about virtual. Meetings and. The most flexible one is to have at least two people in the physical location and then everybody else can be virtual. That was a compromise. I don't, I think it went to the Senate and I, please don't quote me. There are other ones that were either trying to shut it down completely or keep it the way it is right now where you can have one or two people electronically. But I made the case in front of the committee that was hearing it that we had better participation and, and a better spread of demographics because people could stay home with their kids and even both parents could volunteer on different committees. And. I don't know.
Makes sense.
It makes sense to all of us who experienced it, but. Some of the other generation didn't like it.
We need to keep working on that. Selectwoman Cowan?
I forgot to update you all. We were able to get consensus from the remaining Water and Sewer Advisory Committee members about the votes that we took in person, so there is unanimous support now.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. So let's think of some folks in town that we can recruit to volunteer.
Laura knows I'm looking at her.
It's more like, think of people you know who know people.
And then do we have a non-public? I just.
We do, I just. Real quick, Correspondence, Mr. Dean talked about the In By The Bandstand. We also got the annual report from the Exeter Sportsman's Club. Our board calendar, April 11th and April 25th for the month of April. And Mr. Dean, you'll get back to us on the 18th and 19th for goal setting.
Can I interject?
Please.
Thing?
Yep.
I looked at the calendar, so when June comes up, that would be June 20th is a Selectboard meeting, so we'll need to reschedule that one.
Thank you. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. So Selectwoman Cowan, I would entertain a motion to enter non-public under RSA 9188132A.
So moved.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Rantioleff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, it's unanimous. We move into non-public. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. and hope that you tune into our other content as well.